This is John.
You're all good, Jayman, everyone.
All righty. And we alter order of public hearing. That's where we begin today. And I will turn it to these.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to give a brief introduction as to why we are here. We have four council tonight, two public hearings on zoning ordinance amendments. And this is part of the process that prescribed by the municipality's planning code for adoption of any change to the borough zoning ordinance. So this process includes sending draft ordinances of each of these ordinances to both the Borough's Planning Commission, which has reviewed and recommended approval vote. It also includes a requirement to provide a copy to the Allegheny County Department of Economic Development, the Planning Division. And the Planning Division had provided comments via letters dated February 21st. Actually, they're both dated February 21st. So the last step before adoption by council was the air from the public on the draft ordinances. So that's what we're here to do tonight with first ordinance. I'll just provide a brief description of it from the preamble. The first ordinance is short-term rentals ordinance, Borough Churchill ordinance number 768. And this is an ordinance of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the Churchill Borough zoning ordinance to provide a definition for the short-term rental use of a dwelling and to authorize the short-term rental use of a dwelling as a conditional use in residential zoning districts of the borough and to establish criteria and conditions related thereto. And just by way of a little bit more background on this one, currently, the borough does not have any regulations at all governing short-term rentals. And I know that there has been some comment regarding whether or not such a use is even appropriate in Churchill. As of now, there's no appellate case law that has made a final determination as to whether or not this type of sort of use can be banned. The general rule is, at least the veteran council folks will know, or will remember, is that your any, any lawful use must be permitted somewhere in the borough. So, you know, the general rule is you can't exclude any lawful uses. And the guess would probably be that even if you can put limitations, which the borough is doing by placing placing conditional use criteria procedural requirements in front of any applicants, you know, it's likely to be required somewhere. So I don't think the likelihood of, or the possibility of banning it is probably not something. We don't want to be the test case for a ban of a lawful use because win or lose, it's an expensive proposition. So this ordinance would require anyone who wants to run a short-term rental, and I think folks are familiar, this is the R V B, the V R V O type rentals, to come before, file an application, to come before council, to have a public hearing and to establish that they meet all the requirements that are proposed in the zoning code, or in the zoning amendment, I'm sorry. So with that said, my notes been available for a significant amount of time online. And without taking up all the air in this place, we'll turn it over, I guess, to the members of the public. We'd ask that your comments be limited to three minutes. And if you could please state your full name and street address before addressing council. If there are anyone in the room who would like to address council on the short-term rental ordinance, I'll see a couple of head shakes here. Alex, can I ask you to poll the virtual audience to see if there's anyone who would like to make a comment? We have two divisions with their hands up. Valerie Waters, I promoted you. Bonnie's already made it over to there. So Valerie, do you want to accept that, or Mr. Waters, if you want to accept that, please do. And then Bonnie, since you're there, why don't you go ahead and unmute yourself? And if you'd like to turn on your camera, please do.
My name is Bonnie Shinaki. I live at 303 Churchill Road. I'd like to express appreciation for Matt Castiglione's leadership of the Borough Council Workshop Meeting last week and to express appreciation to all who participated in the discussion of hiring Pachek Associates to assist the borough in updating the borough zoning ordinance. Those discussions put councils deliberations about the community in context and provided insights into the next steps. I recognize that a project of this scope takes time, coordination, and will require thoughtful discussions among members of the Borough Council, staff, consultants, and the borough solicitor. I understand the Borough Council will need to pass a resolution 4563 to apply to secure funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development.
I apologize for interrupting. This, this is the public hearing on the short-term rental ordinance. Did you have any comments?
I'm sorry, I thought. I'm sorry, I thought you were having public comments for the general public comments first before the public hearings. Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. Public meeting portion. So if you want to just maybe hang on to that one, we can circle back to you for the actual.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm out of order. Sorry.
No, no problem. Thank you.
It's okay.
All right. At this time, there are no other hands up in the online participants. Any other numbers we need to check on? And we're gonna check one more time to see. There's one phone number. Call-in user, and I will permit them to speak. They should have, I don't know how it works, but I think they hear or they get a prompt to unmute. Well, I think we've given time for folks to, to let us know if they want to speak so we can then move on to the second ordinance that's under discussion tonight at these public hearings. That is opposed Borough Churchill ordinance 769 regarding wireless communications facilities. And this is an ordinance of Churchill Borough, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, providing for the amendment of the Churchill Borough Code ordinances. Specifically, the addition of Part Two, Chapter 304, Section 304-36.1, wireless communications facilities, providing for purposes and findings of fact related to the adoption of the amendment, providing for definitions, establishing certain general and specific standards related to the location, placement, construction, and maintenance of power-based wireless communication facility, non-power wireless communications facilities, and small wireless communication facility. Providing further for the regulation of such facilities within the public rights of way and outside the public rights of way. Providing for the establishment of certain application and annual renewal fees. Providing for the enforcement of said regulations and providing for effective data. So again, this, this ordinance, like the last short-term rental ordinance, has followed the same sort of procedural requirements under the municipality planning code and state law. The, by way of a little bit of additional background on this ordinance, the borough did engage a special counsel in co-involvement to advise and prepare this ordinance in consultation with the zoning committee and the, or maybe the infrastructure committee, I'm sorry. And the planning commission has also reviewed and recommended approval of this ordinance. And again, recognizing that I'm not the expert on this, in this field, my understanding, and certainly Alex or, or or Mr. Castiglia can correct me if I'm mistaken, but my understanding is that the primary purpose of this zoning ordinance is to update the borough's regulations to be consistent with both federal case law and FCC regulations that have been issued in connection with the regulation of, among other things, small cell 5G wireless communication facilities. And when it comes to the, there's sort of different categories here. You have your tower, which is your classic, you know, that's a cell tower. I know, I know how that works. That's, that's going to be a one type of zoning approval. You have a non-power wireless communication facility, which is an antenna that's attached to another large structure. And the borough has, has reasonable control over those types of uses. You can require a conditional use application, you can require, subject to certain federal timelines, you can require certain criteria, screening, et cetera, those sorts of things. When it comes to the 5G small cell wireless communications facilities, the borough basically has very little power as to how those are regulated. Those are primarily regulated by the Pennsylvania Utilities Commission, and those are going to be located most of the time in public rights of way, utility rights of way. So that regardless of how the borough or Borough Council feels about that particular use, you have very little ability to control the when, where, and how, except to assess reasonable fees as, as has been recommended by your special counsel. So with all of that said, I could go ahead now and turn it over. I think we have maybe one person at least who could get a comment in the room. So why don't you come on up? You can state your name, spell your last name, please, and give us your address in your three minutes.
Elena Nelson, 3815 Henley Drive. With that introduction, my comments may seem like fighting an uphill battle, but I'm prepared, I'm still going to say them anyway. Thank you, council, for all the work on the ordinance and bringing it to our attention. I do recognize that, as you said, we may have a little power with respect to 5G and that we all want to keep up with progress in our community and move forward. But in this particular instance, the health effects of 5G are just really unknown at this time. And I would ask council to move forward with the precautionary principle in mind before we do this to our community. There are communities that have successfully banned 5G. And I'm sorry for the late notice of the email to all of you, but I did put that information in the email if you'd like to review it. So for me, as just a stay-at-home mom and considering, well, what is the benefit of 5G and these small cell towers in our community? I was reminded of two things. And the first was, in the height of the lockdown, I had six people in my home, all schooling, grade school, high school, college, my husband working from home. We had no problem at all connecting to the internet, getting service, nothing. I mean, whatever we have here now was certainly good for our needs as a family of six. So I'm, as council, like, what is the benefit of installing 5G in our community? If there's unknown health risks, what would be the benefit? And who is benefiting from installing 5G in our community? I don't know. As a second example, when my children were in grade school, they did, you know, you have to do the science fair, and it wasn't my children. But as we all do, support our kids, go to the science fair. One experiment, a child did putting plants next to their 5G, I'm sorry, their wireless router in their home. The other plants were left to the control. And this student in grade school found that the plants who were exposed to wireless radiation in their home were less hardy and less robust. Now, that doesn't prove anything, a grade school science experiment, but it does tell you that perhaps there might be something to the wireless radiation on the effects of at least plant health in that example. So since the Federal Communication Commission has really failed to demonstrate the safety of wireless and radiation, I'm sorry, wireless radiation and 5G on human health, I would ask council to consider trying to ban 5G in our borough until the safety has been established. And in your email, there is a lawsuit reference to that, where they have failed to demonstrate the safety of this wireless radiation. For more information, for anyone interested about the safety on human health, please visit the Environmental Health Trust website, or it's E H trust.org. And that was founded by Deborah Davis, who is a local Pittsburgher. She attended Taylor Alderites and the University of Pittsburgh. And she has a wealth of information about this topic on that website. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For anyone else in the room who would like to provide comments? Yeah, if you mind checking our virtual group. It's like Mr. Balkis, his hand. Ken, I'm going to promote you to a panelist, if you could please, when you accept that. If you'd like, you may turn your camera off and unmute yourself to speak.
Is that, can I start speaking?
We can hear you now.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. My comments could be very brief in that I did not have planned comments, but I wanted to follow up on the speaker, the, the comments that were just made there in the room by a member of the public. Oh, by the way, my name's Ken Balki. I live at 2007 Hampstead Drive. Been a resident for 45 years. And I also serve as Chair of the Tree Committee for the Borough. And my comments are going to come from that perspective and as a resident. When I listened to the discussion, the introduction of, of this, the 5G ordinance, I wanted to know if the borough, we've looked at, we, we, the right of, you say, okay, we have the right of way, and we can go ahead and sort of do what we want. Well, you can and you can't. We've had discussions with the electric utility companies in terms of the number of trees that have impacted over the last couple of years, and we understand the work that's there. And we have a point of contact actually at Duquesne Light, who stays informed with us. And we've been able to actually stop certain trees from being impacted from their work. And the question would be, not knowing, I understand the 5G from the prior discussions from the planning committee, as well as other meetings, that this could be far more pervasive. And it's not just on public right of way, but I understand it can hit private residents as well. And I just wanted to make sure, just like the comment was made about understanding the health and safety impacts, you know, the environmental impacts, it just keeps getting worse and worse as each day goes on. The impact we have on our environment in so many unseen ways, whether it's putting up solar panels, removing trees for it, same thing happens here. So the question I would just ask is if Borough Council makes sure that we have notified, the Borough Manager and the staff have notification in front of any work to be done, so we have a chance to at least respond in case we have, see something that's not correct and could be very damaging to the, to the environment of our borough. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, well, yes, sir. All right, fantastic. Well, that unless there's any council members who feel they need to speak at this time, it would probably be appropriate to speak if you have any comments during the motion that's made during the meeting. So are we go ahead and close the public hearing? So move?
Hi.
All there.
Hi.
All right, fantastic. Thank you, everybody. Mr. President, I will turn it back very much to you.
Thank you. Thank you for proceeding the meeting back. I appreciate that. I hope you enjoy running, running public hearings. Many, many hours of time. Thank you. I think at this time, in order to move to regular meeting, we will call it to order now at 7:20 outside of the public hearing. If I can get a roll call for the
Yes, Councilmember Deb Cassini-Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Diane Law.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mac Stadia.
President.
Councilmember Kelly Rannadaler.
Here.
Councilmember Andrea Tella.
Here.
And online, we have Roper Shet Williams, councilmember.
Present.
And Mayor Damarath is here as well.
I'm still here. All right, thank you. If you can rise if you're able for the pleasure of allegiance. A pleasure to do this, to allow a living in a serious affair. And to the Republic, with hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in every single aspect of it. Let us say, the spring has sprung. We are here, welcome on the agenda. The Easter bunny that came by, and my daughter is still, still, still willing to, to hang with the Easter bunny. Makes it that's the tricky age of, I think I'm done, but I'm not quite. But we have quite a bit to do. So we will head right into the public comment. So this is the portion where individuals, any comments you want to make does not have to be pertaining to the proposed zoning amendments. You can actually bring that up if you want during, during this public comment as well. Three minutes if you state your name and address. We're looking at taxpayers and residents. And so I will turn it over to internal first, and then we'll go online, because I know there's somebody online. But anyone?
No.
Okay, it's quiet on the, on the inside. We will go to the online space and look for manager for who we will call first.
Bonnie, you're still a panelist, so if you'd like to start, then go ahead and unmute yourself, and if you'd like to turn your camera, please do. Thank you.
Sorry for the repetition. Would it be simpler if I just sent you the comments? Or would you like me to repeat them?
You are free to do what you would like, Bonnie.
I'll just read the last part of this. I'll send you the comments. But I just want to say, I understand the borough will need to pass a resolution, and I also hope the Borough Council will continue engaging residents so the process of updating the borough zoning ordinance is transparent. And thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
And I'll send, send you the com.
Thank you, Bonnie. Really appreciate it. Any other looking at public comments? If we can, you've already done that. I was going to say, if you'd like to call a, call an user. I don't see anybody else with a hand raised. I'd like to give a couple of seconds, give people the opportunity, just in case. Again, if you look down, you have the kind of opportunities to raise hand. If you click on that, we're able to promote you if you're interested in making a comment. Right now, we don't have anybody else in the, of the attendees who have asked for a public comment. I will say we promoted a call-in user number one. If you want to unmute, you will have the floor. If not, we will close public comment and move forward into our ordinary actions. I just want to give you a quick second. All right. All right, then I'm going to move forward, close public comment, and move into ordinary items. We've got quite a few items to get through today, beginning with number three, which is the minutes.
Mr. President, I move to accept the meeting minutes for the Monday, March 6, 2023 Borough Council Workshop Meeting and Monday, March 13, 2023, Regular Council Meeting.
Second. Any discussion pertaining to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And the minutes are accepted without opposition. Moving on to the mayor's report.
Mr. President, motion to accept the mayor's report.
One second before you do that, I should, as, as a new council person, I should give you the heads up. We have the mayor generally make his comments, then we report for the motion. My, my apologies. I'd like to speak.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Ron Akley has reported to me that there were no critical or significant incidents during the month of April 2023. Our officers handled a total of 1,072 events consisting of both calls for service and proactive patrol engagements in detail, resulting in 11 arrests. The department's police vehicles logged a total of 6,816 miles this month, that's 2,982 more than last month. The year to date is a total of 16,328. The 2017 Ford Interceptor SUV number 10 is still out of service. Chief Ron Akley has reported that the total amount of managerial fines collected for the month of April 2023 was $867.88. The total for the year to date, 2023, is $3,184.94. The tip, the tipic, yeah, the ticket summary for the month of April 2023 was 40, zero non-traffic, nine parking, and 39 traffic tickets. Chief Akley has reported to me that recently, that recently took delivery of two speed alert enforcement signs. One will be posted in the 1,400 block of Buell Road and the other at the 2,500 block of Greensburg Bike. These devices are radar-equipped for the purpose of capturing motorist speeds, which are then shown via LED display. For excess speeds, red and blue lights, blue LED lights will activate. These devices are sophisticated and, in addition to travel speed, are also capable, capable of collecting useful data and storing it via cloud-based storage. The devices are also, also green and that they are solar-powered. The chief has met with our engineers on site at both locations to discuss the proper placement of the signs. It is his plan to have them erected and in operation in the near future. In addition, the chief would also like to remind motorists that with the start of the warmer weather, we should be encouraged to please be mindful of their travel speeds and in here, do science posted throughout, and anywhere you travel. Many of our streets are regularly used by pedestrians, bicyclists, and at all hours of the day and evening. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of April 2023 are reported on the attached police department reports. Thank you. And all right, I understand that the new vehicle is in, and hopefully we strike maybe Wednesday.
Oh, great.
About time.
Now.
Yes, Mr. President, motion to accept the mayor's report for March 2023.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I would just thank you and the chief for, for both the report, as well as, I know the chief had sent out a email to the Public Safety Committee outlining kind of gun modifications that are being used, any other folks added, to convert locks, particularly from, from semi to fully automatic. I would just point out that this is an ongoing problem that extends beyond kind of the Glock trigger, that we've seen it in a number of different formats, both long weapons, small, and short, and handguns. So something that I would, as Churchill, and I speak for myself as the council person, I don't speak for any other council person with the next comments I will make. But I think these are the kind of things that we need to push our state representatives and our federal representatives to ban. Because I don't need scenarios in which, you know, our, our police officers are our government. Right? It is, it is not a safe and healthy space for us as residents. It's unhealthy and safe space for our police officers. And so from my vantage point, and from my daughter's, an interesting point, for those who don't know, she has, at the age of six, already been advocating for gun control after tree of life, which affected her. So it's something that I'm very passionate about, something that I stand by for the safety of everyone. No, I only tell us. Any other comments on, on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And the mayor's report is accepted without opposition. Moving on to both treasurer's reports, as well as the finance.
Mr. President, I motion to accept the treasurer's report for March 31, 2023, and direct the finance officer to pay the bills for the Borough of Churchill accrues since March 13, 2023.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? As a matter of course, as I do every, every meeting, any bill that's above the amount, and we think we've been at 10, but it used to be 15, doesn't matter, but three. We read publicly just to make sure that the, while the public has access to all of this, making sure that big expenditures are brought out and that people see them upfront, in a matter of transparency. As I said, this month, we have three gateway engineers, an amount of $29,366.59. Biglyadi Landscaping, again, that's our road crews, and the amount of $17,057.32. And All Traffic Solutions, Inc., again, the traffic signs, in the amount of $12,156. Any other discussion either on the treasurer's report or the payment bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And the report is accepted and the bills are to be paid. Moving on to number seven.
Mr. President, I would motion to adopt ordinance 768 of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and ordinance codifying the regulation of short-term rentals in the borough.
Second.
Any discussion on the matter? Again, we just had a public hearing and a brief explanation by your solicitor. If anybody has any other comments before we move forward with the roll call.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just summarize, you know, we've talked about this a number of times, but for anyone that maybe hasn't been present previously, you know, right now, without any type of ordinance, there's nothing, you know, to stop anyone from putting their property on Airbnb or VRBO or any of the other short-term rental sites. And the borough doesn't really have any control over whether or not they do that. So, you know, I know there were some comments about whether this might encourage people to do that, but this this gives the borough the opportunity to then know, you know, if that's happening, they have to come in front of the borough and fill out applications to do so and then show how they're going to meet, you know, the conditions that are placed on that. So this really is to to help protect the health, safety and welfare of the borough.
And for further clarification, it's not a question of whether we are for or against Airbnb or VRBO. It is a question of making sure we have some understanding of what's happening in our community, making sure that we don't have scenarios that we've seen in other communities where these type of rentals are used and then abused and then, quite frankly, tragedies occur. And so having some understanding of what's going on is really going to be endgame for us, you know, to monitor and to have an understanding, quite frankly, for our public safety officers to know. So that if something does occur, they know where they're going and what they're getting into versus, you know, oh, it's Jay's house. It's Jay's house, but Jay's not there, right? You know, and so that's an important thing for them to understand. So is there any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, this is a roll call.
Then the roll call names were selected at random. Councilmember Castilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassini Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Datilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Law?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacheco Williams?
No.
Councilmember Rend Taylor?
Yes.
And President Doran?
Yes, so the motion passes and six to one. Moving on to number eight.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 769 of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and ordinance codifying the regulation of wireless communications facilities.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Any discussion on the matter? So I would point out again, I think there was some conversation in regards to what our limitations are and what we feel our limitations are. I did start to look at what was provided, by the way. I didn't see anything that was in-state necessarily that that kind of led to us. However, I would point out that even with the moving forward with this ordinance, it doesn't preclude us from any other later date, right? Looking at another ordinance, if we're able to kind of substantiate that. I would be very interested in speaking with you after, quite frankly, because it's something that, you know, we we have not shied away from spaces that when we think we have the authority and the ability. And I think we will look to a couple other kind of industries. So I'd like to continue that conversation. I don't think that this is beginning of the or end of anything, like it's, or I should say, the beginning.
I think it's the kind of thing where it's important to know that there's probably no question or concern that residents have that somebody on this council didn't have. So the the exploration of the details that are involved and the impacts that are involved in this kind of operation, aside from the fact that we might not win in a in a court battle and, you know. I started out being skeptical about this after all the research that we did, after everything that we saw. I am comfortable now, and I just wanted you to know that. So I'm happy to talk afterwards as well. Thank you. I also want to concur what you were saying in the beginning. I was very skeptical and we went through a tremendous amount of data studies. There's always going to be a study that says something different, no question. I mean, that happened years ago at microwave ovens and even with these things. That's just the way it is. But I mean, you know, you and I have talked, all of us have talked about this and we've gone through a lot of data and I as well feel comfortable now. But I'm happy to talk to you afterwards as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this again is a roll call.
Again, the names are randomly selected. Councilmember Rend Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Pacheco Williams?
No.
Councilmember Law?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassini Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Datilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Castillo?
Yes.
And President Jay Doran?
Yes. Yeah, the motion carries and a six to one, and we move forward now to number nine. If you have to pull up our our chart, see who's supposed to be number? The number nine was Brooke, if you can. Does Wanderson will take number nine?
Okay, second. Mr. President, I motion to adopt Resolution 4563 of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Municipal Assistance Program for funding assistance to update the Borough of Churchill's zoning code.
Second, thank you. Any discussion on this? Again, we're looking for some help to keep this going forward. Anytime you can get additional, yeah, quite frankly, additional funds to help us do the work that we need to do to update our codes. I think it's a good space for us to be in. Means it doesn't come out of our taxpayers. It comes out of, well, of course, it comes out of a taxpayer. We've all paid the tax in state too, but it doesn't come from from the Churchill space of our taxpayers. So I don't know if there's any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries without opposition. Moving us to number 10.
Mr. President, I motion to adopt Resolution 4564 of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appointing Brooke Pacheco Williams as delegate and Valerie Bernthaler as alternate to the Allegheny County Southeast Tax Collection Committee.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Any discussion on the matter? Other than to say thank you both for your your service at council and now we may keep just adding things for you to do, and I greatly appreciate it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. All right, and motion passed without opposition. One more thing for you all to do. Moving on to number 11.
Mr. President, I move to hire Pachek Associates with the Borough in updating the borough's zoning ordinance. And there is an explanation. Would you like me to read it?
I don't think it's necessary inside of the motion. If it's something you want to read, you can do that inside of any comment that we have. Second, thank you. Any discussion?
I'll just say that Pachek MTR is the same consultant that worked with us on the multi-municipal plan a couple of years ago that happened to do multiple municipal planning with the Borough of Monroeville and Wilkins and Churchill. And that plan is available on our website. The link is on our website if anyone wants to see it. They were also the consulting firm that assisted us in the planning and visioning series that was made available under a short notice because COVID had just hit in 2020. So that is also available through our website.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, and motion passes without opposition. Moving on to number 12.
Mr. President, I motion to award the Churchill Borough 2023 paving program base bid and add alternates one, two and three to A. Liberoni Incorporated, the apparent low bidder, for the bid amount of $487,454.14.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So I think we we talked about this previously, but A. Liberoni, as our engineering consultant has said, is a qualified bidder. They've done work in the borough before. They've done, you know, good work for the borough on paving. Because of some additional funds that were available, you know, since we were a little bit conservative during coronavirus with our budgeting, you know, we are going to be able to pave, you know, more roads than we typically would. So that's always a good thing. We're going to continue to get caught up on some of the paving that was deferred previously and keep moving that forward. That being said, you know, typically, we would usually do our base bid, maybe one add alternate, but we'll be doing kind of all the work that we bid. So it's exciting and, you know, we'll have information coming out as that project, you know, gets bid and underway. I expect some time midsummer, you know, depending on weather.
That is excellent news. Is there any other discussion that, I'm not sure if I thought I heard, or unmuted, maybe I was incorrect?
Yes, I wanted to ask what we initially proposed for our bidding for this year because the Finance Committee has not met to discuss this. And so if you can answer that question for me, that would be great.
So typically, we budget $350,000 a year, but Alex, do you want to?
I'm not sure if my question correctly, Brooke. Do you want the estimate that Gateway had provided for the base bid and then the add alternatives?
What I'm asking is when we drafted the proposed budget for 2023, I believe that we allocated a certain amount of money for the paving to be done this year. And so I wanted to clarify exactly how much we had allocated in our proposed and adopted budget for 2023.
We talked in December with the general fund budget. We talked a lot about the capital budget, but it was something we never, you know, talked about or voted on publicly. Quite frankly, because I wasn't able to get all the details figured out for it. As Matt was saying, we started with the number 350, and that was based on the tax raising that we had done a couple of years before. The thought was when we increased the mileage in 2021, that combined with the liquid fuels amount would equal about 350,000. But as Matt was saying, last year, we anticipated moving about 125,000 on the liquid fuels fund, which we did not do. So that was a carryover in that account. And previously, at the end of 2021, so before 2022, there was a year-end transfers we didn't make. And as we unfortunately haven't been able to meet entirely with the committee, the meeting with the chair of the Finance Committee to kind of walk Valerie through this and as well as the Infrastructure Committee, so they added confidence of it. And we talked a tiny bit about it last week, that we were, we have a very large balance that we began the year with. You recall, we began the year with over 50% in the general fund. As a fund balance policy, we'd like to be around 18%. So we were a good bit over that. And what we'll be doing is making the transfers to cover the amount. We were real happy with the bid amounts that we got based on what we projected with the engineer's estimates. And and we usually have found our experience to be more conservative even than that number than what we end up experiencing. So hopefully, when the Finance Committee gets a chance to meet, Brooke, you have a lot more time to talk more about how those numbers all work and see that. I felt real confident, and I feel confident right now, you know, advising council to go ahead, have the entire of roads, including the add alternates, that will get you close to that $500,000.
And and just an additional question or clarification, Alex? I believe some of that additional surplus was also unexpected funds from the coronavirus infrastructure money that we received as well, right?
Yeah, if you recall, in 2020, there was some money that came through the county. And initially, that's pretty much what's got us through the technology side of things. And the additional amounts of money came through the feds, through the state, and reported to the Department of Treasury. In total, about $400,000 between 2020 and last year were came to the borough as we saw the the different stimulus and federal packages from the federal government to local governments.
And and just for for my understanding, the the bids are not something that wasn't provided to all council, right? Like everybody had the opportunity to review them, to know what the alternatives were.
Yeah.
Right? I just want to make sure. And then, once that was done, the ability to, of what we were able to get on the alternates, right, was made between the chairs along with the borough manager and now is being presented to the council for discussion. Am I missing anything in this?
The the Infrastructure Committee, we didn't have a formal meeting, but we discussed it individually with all members. And we're recommending to move forward with.
Which is the same to me as kind of church, like individual conversations versus versus voting. So I I have no no issue with that, just to point that out. But I appreciate the question and clarification.
I do as well. I think one of our goals, all of our committees, is really with the capital budget and doing a five-year plan and having that clear in December when we're adopting budgets. We're only required by the Bureau of General, if we did, not other fund budgets. And we'd like to do that this year, a very, maybe even by ordinance possibly, to have them all as an attachment, at least possibly to a resolution so that, you know, they'll be in a line that everyone can see, doesn't mean it's budget. But it's a great question and something we agonize about, is like, can we do this? Can we do this? But we feel real confident that we can.
Just let me say that probably more than any other issue, our residents want us to get these roads in good condition. We were very far behind in in that in happening, that happening, going back a number of years. I'm just delighted that we've been able to manage the money well enough that we're able to add those three additional portions of streets. This is something we pray for, that we have money to do more. So I'm delighted that we're here.
To your point, when we, when there was a point that we had a 10-year plan that hadn't been looked at in over 10 years. So if I'm coming out of council, it was a real concern. The only thing I would just say, the one of the fun things, and I say this for a newest council member who knows this already in her own, her own world. But one of the the greatest things about councils, you come in with 15 great ideas that you really, really want to do. You sit down, and the very first thing you're hit with is, so what's going on with our streets? And what's going on with our sewers? Because it turns out, local government is about, you know, keeping you safe, making sure the streets are there. As I'm about to move over to to our wonderful public work, girl, just one moment, you know, addressing those issues of our streets and our sewers. So I super appreciate that. I don't know if anybody else had any other comments before we put this to to vote. Any other discussion?
Just kind of want to say that my question was in response to, you know, initially, when we had proposed paving the roads, I was under the impression that we were looking at the base bid. And then, once the idea of doing the base bid and the alternatives was a decision that was made by the chair, and we talked about it, I believe briefly during the workshop meeting. But again, I just wanted to revisit that conversation today. As far as any other capital improvement projects for 2023, are there any other large expenditures on the horizon?
Yes. We have a number of things we're looking to address in this year's capital budget. And again, I we're going to get really into the details with with your committee.
Next week.
Yeah, and I'm excited about that. But we're meeting with the county. I may as well give this update on Monday to rebid. The bathroom project here for accessibility and the locker room project. We did get a grant from the county for about $60,000, but the project's about $200,000. So that's a large expenditure. We have a couple of stormwater projects that we're looking to address in Dennis's reports and the project updates, the status updates. There's a lot of information related to those and some of the estimated cost. And Dennis has worked really closely with Michelle to figure out, you know, some of these things that we anticipate doing. But the biggest one is that bathroom project. If we can somehow get a bid and turn it around and get it done this year, we don't want to lose sight of getting the locker room completed here at the Borough Building and the bathrooms accessible. And then vehicles, as we just mentioned, I shouldn't. Rell's truck is in as well, and it is also getting outfitted. And then, two trucks that were, or two vehicles were ordered months apart, and now one is taking over here to get to us, might arrive within the same week. The truck was ordered in August of 2022, and the police vehicle was ordered, I believe, maybe March or February 2022. And we have to pay for those.
Thank you for clarifying. Definitely in support of us making sure that our community is progressing and that we're addressing safety concerns. So, you know, that's where my questions stem from, just ensuring that we are understanding exactly what we're doing moving forward and ensuring that we will have the capital necessary to cover those expenses.
We could, we'll do stuff at our our committee meeting, and if you're unable to attend, make sure you get notes as well. And if you have any questions, you can always give me a call.
I look forward to the meeting.
Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And motion carries without opposition. Rose, give page. There are things that make me happy. Uh, moving on to some discussion items, I do want to kind of cover through some of our staff, make sure that we have the coverage, starting, uh, with our borough engineer.
Uh, yes, well, we just spoke about the paving program, but, uh, the sewer programs have already begun this year. CCTV has been underway, specifically the priority CCTV for the road programs. And we did kick off both the excavation and manhole, manhole lining contracts, which were awarded last month.
You, and anything else?
Dennis, you may want to, just to note on that last discussion, we did, when we met with the contractors, did not give them all of the tasks we would hope to do this year because we were wanting to get through the infrastructure committee and the finance committee, getting them caught up on that. So back to Brooke's conversation or the discussion about, do we have enough money to get through all these different projects? We, they're on the hook, but we haven't, like, said to them, go ahead and start all these because we've got to get all of our things, I think, in order and see what money we can do and what project we can complete this year.
Yeah, the, the initial pre-construction meetings were held, but the initial work orders have not been provided. Waiting to verify whether or not there were any priority road repairs that were required. And then, uh, at that point, once finance committee had decided how much, you know, how much funding there was available, then we can start chipping away at the, at the infrastructure repairs that we know that exist.
Thank you. Excellent. Um, I just wanted to make a, a general comment on that, Dennis. Uh, the, I was approached, uh, by a homeowner that mentioned there was some work going on by one of the, I think it was a camera crews, uh, and had kind of gone into their yard, but they didn't know that that was going to be happening. Um, so I know just for our folks, you know, if you see these folks out and, you know, they are kind of blocking your driveway or, or on your property and you haven't been notified, please let us know. Um, you know, we did have a, an additional meeting with the contractor to make sure that public, uh, notification, you know, and they're doing what they need to do, knock on people's door and let them know if they're going to be blocking the road for a minute with, you know, some lining or, or whatever else. But if that's happening, please let us know.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, if we did make sure that we reminded them, uh, a number of times here and communication is always key and making sure that residents feel safe and are aware of who is entering their property. And many of the sewers are in backyards, so they may need to enter a backyard, but they should not first. And make sure that they've, uh, made that, made the resident aware.
And I assume they, they carry a particular proper identification along with them, so. Make that assumption.
Make that assumption. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion from, uh, Gateway? All right, let's move to, um, Public Works in Fire with the man who keeps us safe in so many different ways, uh, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things to report. Uh, storm damage from the last two storms we've had, uh, the last couple of weekends. We actually had four large trees fall in the bar, borough. We had one on, uh, Jamestown, one on Kingsdale, one on Homer and one on Boe Stone. Uh, the one that did the most damage was on, uh, Jamestown Place. Uh, it fell on two cars, uh, damaged them pretty bad. Uh, the other one was on Kingsdale. It fell into the house, uh, knocked the chimney off. It did some intrusion into the house, but not too bad. And the other two were just basically trees fell and knocks some larsen. That was about it. During those two storms, the fire company ran about twenty-six calls, so for, for service. So we were pretty busy during those two storms. Um, under Public Works, we're going to see the guys out now. We're going to be hot patching in the next couple of weeks. Uh, also, I'm sending a crew down to William Penn Highway to, uh, clean those sidewalks up down there. Uh, we waited long enough for the state to do anything, so we're going to send our crews down there. We're going to get that cleaned up. And that's all I have for right now, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, sir. Appreciate the, the guys who do these, who sent that along.
All righty, just, just to repeat from last week's meeting, I don't remember if Ralph was on, but, uh, we had good public comment about, uh, getting the road cleaned up. I know that Ralph's, you know, have the guys out there to get that cleaned up, so. We certainly appreciate their hard work for that and taking on that dangerous task to get that done.
And fortunate, uh, in, in the workers that we've had, how they've been there, so I appreciate Ralph and, and the guys who are working for. Uh, moving on, I will head over to the solicitor and then over to borough manager.
Very well, Mr. President.
Sir.
Just quickly, uh, with the addition of councilmember Tillo, we did work on the operations guide. And with the election this year, our goal is always to have it fresh for the council when they get seated in January. So if you can please look at it and make recommendations, it's certainly something the, or the communications committee will be looking at. There's always room for improvement. We'd love your feedback on what you think we're missing and we need to clarify. Now, communications is a concern, um, even how we do budgeting and it's going that out. But really happy that Ashley and Michelle primarily were the ones able to put that all together. And really, uh, we shared it with the local government academy and got a lot of, uh, good feedback from them that it was a best practice that we have something like an operations guide and councilmember law. You were really the instrumental saying, we need to have something like this. We remember it's going to, that there's something to give them, this, explain a little bit about who's on first and who's on second base kind of stuff. But thanks.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Excellent. Uh, having gone through, folks, I don't know, uh, if anybody on council has any additional comments, either based on committee or other comments that you'd like to make before we move forward. Yes, I will make sure to read on the, on the dear committees.
I just plan, I just want to say as far as the public safety committee is concerned, we are meeting tomorrow morning and, uh, we're going to be hearing from both our fire chief and our police chief about their activities in relationship to other outside organizations and other police and fire departments. Um, so that we know going forward what all those initiatives are and how they'll impact us.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments to council?
Alex, I know you usually do this, but we do have fourteen attendees. Now you all can't see that, but we do have fourteen attendees and eleven analysts that are online right now.
Three on Facebook.
And three on Facebook.
And I would be remiss, I know that we got the report, why, I'm, I'm not going to skip you there, but I want to, I want to make sure something else. Um, and if you're missed, I know that we got the report, but I did not ask the chief if he had any additional comments that he wanted to make. Uh, and so chief, I, I will make sure not to skip you for, you sit through the meeting, that's the least I can do, sir. So any, any comments you're willing, sir?
Uh, the only thing I have is just to reiterate what I put in the mayor's report, and that is that with the, uh, nice weather arriving, it, it's the, the foot traffic, uh, pedestrian traffic has already started, you know, even months ago, but even more so now. At all hours of the, the early morning till mid-evening, at dusk, um, there are a ton of pedestrians out, dog walkers, bicyclists, um, joggers. So just please be mindful of your speed and, uh, also adhere to all the posted signage. You know, you'd be surprised how many times that, when we do enforcement details, particularly in neighborhoods, uh, where we get a lot of complaints of speeding and stop sign violations, how many people we end up stopping that are residents from that, that area. So just do your part to protect yourself, your loved ones, your neighbors, and, and just, uh, be mindful of your driving, especially this time of year. That, that would be it though, sir. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate you looking out for us. Yeah, hope every day you guys move home safely. Uh, having said that, moving back to focus.
I have a question for, um, the chief.
Yes.
I'm just curious why, um, we logged two thousand more miles on our cars this month compared to last month. I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I, I think I might go there. We have another car online.
Yeah, that's it.
I wanted to mention and report that.
Right.
Yeah, I just saw the difference in the mileage between when.
Right.
We had a little car online.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, I can't be quite, I just wanted to counsel everyone that, uh, you know, Officer Sage, a couple of weeks ago, was involved in a traffic stop when she got injured. So she's been off, uh, work for a while, going through therapy. So, and, uh, I understand she's on the mend, hoping to be back to work soon with us. I'd like to also mention that there's a tree planting on April fourteenth, next Friday, down at the, uh, Green Space. It's, uh, being sponsored by Tree Pittsburgh and the Woodland Hills, uh, high school students will be down there planting trees. And they're looking for adult, adult volunteers to come down and give a hand. It's an all-day affair. It's like eight o'clock in the morning till three o'clock in the afternoon. So if you have some time to come down and help out, maybe you don't stay all day, but if you can come down and give a little bit of time. Um, but I was told that I had to have the names of the people to give to the Tree Pittsburgh. Um, if you're going to come, I, I guess some security had to kind of check you out first before you come down with a high school kit. So if you could do that, that'd be great and appreciated. Uh, I did want to mention the High School Play is coming up in April this year. It's Suzical. Um, so if you haven't already gotten your tickets, uh, it might be worthwhile getting it, as you know. Um, the High School is always involved with the, have a great play and they end up on, at the Gene Kelly's, walking away with a number of different awards for that. So if you get out and, and, uh, see the play, I'd appreciate that. Also, the Churchill Wilkins Rotary Golf outing is May thirtieth and coming up, uh, it's on a Tuesday. It's a, it's a fine event. If you don't golf, there's a great dinner afterwards and you're always welcome to come out for that. We appreciate that. Uh, if you look on the Facebook page, Churchill Borough does have a Facebook page. Um, and we post a lot of pictures and we try to post a lot of pictures of things that are going on in the neighborhood. Um, the last group of pictures, uh, which will lead me to the next one. We want to thank the residents for giving the warm welcome when the bunny came around and did her visit last Saturday. I think it was, uh, close to ninety different people and, uh.
Children.
You know, I. I had the pleasure of driving, uh, the bunny around and Officer Jeff Ensler was our escort. And everything worked out really fine. We had a great day. And if, if you could just see the, the smiles on the kids and, and adults as well. And a lot of adults are telling us, you know, when I was a kid, that I used to come out and see the bunny. And now my kids are coming out to see the bunny. And I've been in the borough thirty-five plus years and that bunny visit was going on back then. So I'm not sure exactly when it started, but it is a very good, um, tradition that we have in the borough. So we appreciate everybody who came out for that. Um, and that was going to, on the Facebook page, I did post pictures of the bunny visit. And also I started a little thing with, uh, the daffodils in our borough. As I ride around, a lot of daffodils blooming in our area. So I'm, I'm just snapping some pictures and posting them on the Facebook page and, and, um, Councilman Klein just sent me a picture of a beautiful tree all in bloom. So I'm going to get those on there. So anybody wants to send me a picture of what's gone on in New York, I'll be sure to get it on the Facebook page. Uh, and I'll see, and that was it. Oh, I also started the Common Gardens that we operate down here on the corner of Buella and Churchill Road. I've spent a couple of these nice, beautiful days down there, kind of cleaning things up. Um, I'm always, anyone who wants to come down and volunteer, you know, contact me, send me your email, send me your phone number, and I'll let you know when I'm down there. Um, or if you ride by and you see my white truck parked in the grass, you know, stop by and say hello and we'll give you a little job to do. But it's a good asset, I think, for, for the borough to have that garden. Everybody rides by. People walk, you'd be surprised the number of people that walk by when I'm over that garden. You wouldn't think that. There are a lot of people that walk that area and they, and the daffodil's in America is in full bloom. So. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Any other comments from council?
I have a couple.
Who's yours?
You mentioned Suzical. I just want to give the dates if anybody was wondering. It's April twentieth to the twenty-second. Within April twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth, you can call the box office, um, at Woodland Hills High School and get your tickets. I mean, they do such a fabulous job. We all know it and I really encourage everybody to come out. I also want to give Woodland Hills High School a shout out. Um, the Carnegie Museum of Art will be showcasing art from the Woodland Hills, um, students. This is the first time, it's May tenth to the twentieth. And it's the first time in the history of the school that their artists will have, um, a showcase of this nature. And I just think that that's very prestigious and, and just fantastic. I want to congratulate all the students who their, their art's going to be displayed in May. So if anyone gets a chance to go to the, to the art museum, please do. And also I want to thank the garbage club because they do a lot with picking up litter. And I said this in the last meeting, I've noticed a lot of litter lately and it bothers me so much. And please don't throw your, your plastic bottle out there. Just bring it home and put it in your garbage can. I don't understand why people do that. And then one other thing, we are having our Churchill dinner. It was in the newsletter. Don't forget, it's Sunday, May seventh. You can, um, come to the office, give a check, you can put a check in the mail, you can do it, call and do it online. Many ways to, um, pay for it. It's very reasonable. It's going to be a lot of fun on Sunday, May seventh. That's all I have.
Outstanding.
Yeah, just along the lines with the litter, um, it, it helps too with your garbage, make sure it is secure in your can. It should be tied up. It's a lot of time when the trash is, is being picked up and it dumps it into the container. If it's loose, it may fly out of that and it's on the road. So, you know, make sure that the trash that you put out is somehow contained in a, in a bag or something. So that would eliminate a lot of, of, uh, litter and go ahead, I'm sorry.
And also mayor, um, when you recycle, people forget and you can't put your recycling things in a bag and put it into the container. You have to take it out of the bag because then that ruins everything. So when you recycle, do not put it in a plastic bag and put it in a.
Turn the bag.
Yes.
Any other comments?
I would just like to thank Chief Ackery for sending the email about the Woodland Hills budgetary meeting, um, that's going to be happening tomorrow. So I would encourage residents in the community to either attend in person at the administrative building at seven P M or to attend by Zoom. They will be talking about the proposed budget for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four and some things that, um, will potentially impact us and, um, and the students who are in the district. So. There's a link also on the website, uh, churchillborough.com that will link you to the Woodland Hills School District website for you to be able to get information about the upcoming meeting, which is happening tomorrow.
Thank you. Very important. Appreciate that. I believe that there's no other comments, or it's between me and you getting to go home. I appreciate, that's on my list. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, just a few things I wanted to kind of cover. Uh, the first is not the deer meeting, although I will get it, deer meeting, Greekly. Uh, and that is in the world of kind of volunteers and, and all that we do. I think it's, you know, the people on this council volunteer in a number of ways, not just sitting at, at meetings, uh, but also every time that we get on this community. So if there are other people who want to help, there are lots of ways that you can be involved, including, uh, assisting. As the mayor said, in certain spaces, I'm over, I give my soccer plug, which I will again in just a minute. Um, but I think, you know, please contact us if you have any desire to be involved with, with council or in any other way. You're happy to try and find spaces that, that help people be involved. Um, having said that, uh, the Woodland Hills U Soccer, as I give my, my plug to my folks, uh, always looking for volunteers to strike the, now we're, now we're about to start our season. So now it is a, a magical space of who can come out and help keep the fields going. Uh, this Sunday, just in case you're wondering, we magical Woodland Hills U ten and eleven teams will be taking on Murrayville. Along with the U twelve teams will be taking on Pittsburgh Dino, both of which will have the same goalie, just to be clear. Uh, you know, it is a very smart ten-year-old who will be ten and goal at twelve-year-olds, the same. Uh, the last point, uh.
Do we know?
What they say.
Signatures?
Did you know her?
Do we know?
You know, if you drive by my house and you hear that screaming high-pitched voice, that's the girl. Um, having said that, I do want to make sure that people know that the deer committee is having a open forum um, at the Blackwood Civic Association, I was looking at twelve-hundred people road. Uh, it'll take place on Thursday, April twentieth, seven to nine P M. Uh, to really kind of have a discussion on where, where to go, what we're going to do and what your thoughts are about the deer. Uh, so if you have an opinion, whatever that opinion may be, I know that the committee would love, uh, to hear from you. Uh, it is one of the best ways to formulate next step. So please come out and share your opinions on that. Uh, outside of that, I have nothing further. So at this time, unless there's something else, I entertain a motion. So move.
President, if I can, just clarify, the actual Woodland Hills School Board meeting is Wednesday, April twelfth and not Tuesday. My days are kind of running together, but it's Wednesday, April twelfth at seven P M. I'm done.
Okay, so appreciate that. Uh, I believe I had a motion on Lord to adjourn. Will do a second?
Yeah, second.
All right, again, so Matt, thank you all very much. Thank you.